First.
I think.
Always in that bill.
Yeah.
Thank you, Zach.
Yeah.
Gosh.
So yes, Walter Lewis, Langman Spanglais, Lang and Sean. Lang Crossley.
Yeah, of course, Cassidy and all those guys.
Right next door.
Right next door?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
And then that, uh, who's the doctor, uh, the gentleman that passed away. Part of the doctor, uh, I don't. We've got the handsome with white hair.
But.
I'm trying to think of the names. Anyway, so many people were there, Sam Bayless.
Yeah. The Lost Hills.
Yeah.
Friend of mine that I called yesterday morning. There's my note in Kermit.
Oh, you're kidding me?
Yeah.
Come on.
At home.
Well, yeah.
I hate getting worn out.
We get, we get old. I had a, I had a birthday.
Oh.
Shouldn't be any.
I'm seventy-one.
You're just a kid.
And just for still ten.
Well.
This is so.
I've got one in the back here.
I try and.
So you have more here than my. So don't get me. Happy birthday.
Oh, boy.
Sam, you're fun. Thank you. Paul Danin Town. I had a suit on. When I first got here. I would like. Well, that's what we think about ACs and T-shirt. Hey, I get. So do you want to hear?
Yes, sir.
No, Laura, the Dallas. So I wanted to. Yeah, moved the Dallas for like seven years or a happy year now. If you know the story.
How about you?
Uh, history now.
Well, I'm wondering if that.
Oh, it will be very interesting. The one on half water. We just did this when you apparently. I know somebody. I mean, let's share. The one on the. He's part of the gas line with the. It was actually.
Sure it is.
Yeah, gas lines. Bailing over. And, uh, there's.
Our school.
Well, this is right there around. On that one. Would you? I had somebody call. I'm a student. Their birthday on. Right now, well, it's not your first place. So we can't keep it on. So there's. Not eleven grand. Uh, so I told him this. So I would. I would be calling or. Not American, I mean, the merits. We're loving Rudy's. They all Rudy. Nothing possible to have.
Yeah, you know, like I say, I totally understand. Yeah, but my goal is.
No, I don't. The problem is. I get. I still do want to tap on it. And they're making right. So. I can't make it what it says. Heard before. Well, it depends on the PCI read. Both brand. The disconnect happened in the form of a. Central media.
Yes.
Exactly. But I finally. And I thought. On that. The past. They're working, but we can move that. That would last. I don't think they're really important. Design people.
Workers that are coming down here to do their.
Literally. But that's, that's what we can put. And if, when, if one of our stuff evolved, I'm kind of noticing. Across. My. Uh, especially. Those people have. And which is they would need to tell us. Done. They would like to. Or help them fill. So I'm chasing down. I don't know. Late song. I mean, one of those. I might get. The representatives. Clearly there's outstanding. Sucks. They're long. You get that last. Can you bring them back? And that. How you doing?
Yeah, how are you?
Yeah, how are you? I'm Luis.
Houston, I knew she had. Like. Fire. Okay.
I'm gonna give you the note. Good to see you, ma'am. But so. Sometimes I'm a process. So.
Yeah.
I, I'm.
Now I appreciate the.
I'm a kid. I agree. Very.
I'm not wanting to.
So he said. So he's not. In his eyes. We weren't examples now. But.
Okay.
I mean, he. So bad. You know. Yes. I'm working. Oh, she's back. He's the rider. He recorded. But he's. Now let's see how. They can speak. We just see. See idiots. What if I didn't? They bad. I'll. This. I don't like the last. I'm like. Yeah. Take care of.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Just like insurance. You know, just make sure.
Yeah. Interesting. My. Sound. I live in. But I haven't. It's. University. It's been the same. Just. English. But anyway. The ship. Don't you. He. Child. How unusual. It's fun.
Hi, Ellen. How are you? Yes, I know.
Be.
Ohio.
Want to hit up our children.
Thank you.
To this.
I agree. Yes, it is. We made a small time. Thank you for being.
A faction that say this. I'm like kicking.
Yeah, it's with. You know.
Our section. In front of me. There's sanctions. Where, where, where I'm doing. And when it's actually. It's. So it's just. So many layers. So many people that. And it's like. We have a lot. You, you are.
Well, that's.
Yes, it's. It's like. All of a sudden, I turned around. These signatures, I don't know. Senior in terms of knowledge, I think, not. I should. That's right. And regular. The regulatory. Of how it impacts into this. You know, it's because we're just a different. You know, we're different now. It's. That's right. That's right. Exactly. Am I a member or an alternate? Maybe they just tell us. Kind of phones. But. As. He's. Have a senior. Okay. Right, right. Was it, was it another, another council member or was it a city attorney?
City.
Then I just. So. Those. See to strange. That's. Wait. And. So. It was, it was, uh. It was before, right before I, I think it was right before I started. It was that. Private station. Yeah. It gives them the best investment. City. You know, gosh. I'm asleep. I don't know. Exactly. Even the. We didn't. The last one's like the. I hate. That. I'm. I don't know. So hard. I heard. They must help. I think. I was. I. I have. It was all. Tell. I was. That's. Um, I'm. Actually. And it's. Most. Well, I asked. It is. No. And this. Coming. Oh, this. Has to do. I'm. Anything. I don't know. People. It was. Yeah. Well, how, what we're kind of this. So. I have this. Like. It's. See. I think. I don't really. You know. That's. It's all. It's something. Say a little. They're hot. Means we're going to shift. Okay. I'm the day. She. Yeah. And I'm like, oh, I should. I'm so. I want to. To. Some. I was like. It's. I'm. Be associated. I. I. I don't know. I. Actually. I'm. I'm. No. I'm sorry. Uh, so you can inter. Well, they. I'm. Leaving. Wow. And I'm. Appreciate. Most of them. None of them. Yeah. So. In fact. We're gonna. Do. That's all. This is. I think. We. Oh. I brought. Our. Personally, I was. This. These are. Six. Four, five, six. Uh, you know, next week. I think. Well, it's like a seven. Universal. That's that. Yeah. It's. They. They're. Okay. Exchange. But. Yeah. I mean. You. There's. For. I've been. I. Yeah, that's. She. She. She's. That's what. I know what's. She. I don't know. They. Yeah, I mean, so. I have. We. That. Yeah. Oh, it's awesome. Yeah. Cause you. You know. So. So. There. I don't know. Exactly. A lot. That only has a. I mean. Someone's. Boomed. Whatever. Time. Back. The kind of guy. That is. How. You know. You. But he. I mean. So. So. You. You. I mean. Right. So. But I'm here to say. Okay. From. Right. But. We're now on the American. Yeah. Yeah. That's. Oh, yeah. Of course. We. Oh. But. See what? Council should be pretty simple. Well. Well. Yes, I. I need the house. Okay. Okay. Later. Hours. Six fifty-five. So.
Will they move it?
It's. Very. Especially. Um, but I was. They that. Although they're right there. All systems. Thirty shot. Mm-hmm. And then there's. Making them. New location. But. They were. So. Once. That was. And then you sit. A. There were some. You know. Yeah. There's consent agenda. Usually takes. Because the mayor's finished. So. Said that you know. I'm just. I'm. Go. Then your. Public. It's like. So. Jingle Jim. So. She goes. I'm. I said. Yeah. There are. The. Lecture. And then, um, Paul. Oh. We. They'll. Yeah. It's. Pretty. I got. Already. Could miss. An amount of the agenda. For. The. No. They. I didn't. They. I didn't. No. And then. Whether. You know. Call. Up. Invite. Get. See. They. They're. Yeah. Around. Actually. It's. I'm. You. Yes, yeah. That's. Demoralize. Their. Level. Revolution. Oh, yeah. That's. Right. Yeah, that's right. I. Yes, yes. You know. Yeah. You know. I. Still. I'm. That's.
Oh, yes.
I still. December. The rest. December. So. The. I. You want. You. And go. Um. But. I. Something. I should. We. Should. Probably. Which is really more special. Really. She. She. And when. Yeah. Yeah. And. I actually. Not. Get. Okay. They look. They're sad on the market. Sixty-seven. Four years from. Very. Well, actually. Then. Just keep those cases. Well. And. We're going to survive. Time. We're. And then. Which. Even. I. I. Yeah. They went up. The. You. Just. That's. Yeah. So. Hopefully. We. That's. Someone. Sure. All right. Next. Yeah. It's. So. That. Then. Okay. It's. Yeah, I. Keep. Thanks. People. You won't think. Third. So. Do. And. This. This. The issue. Is. We're. Not. Not. I was. First. Decision. I think. It's. Pursue. Plus. I know. Such. All. It's. They're. They. Use. It. Like. Yeah, I. It's. So. I'm. So. Remind. I. 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 The. Now. Because. You know. I. I'm. The. I don't. I don't. There. Well. Well, they. You know. The. Yeah. Like. I. You know. Yeah. We could. We. More. Yeah. I'm. So. I. She. Sure. These. These. Man. For. Some.
Let me. Let me get the thing started.
Yes, sir, please.
Okay, so we get started. Ryan, tell me we're rocking and rolling. All right, well, welcome to the meeting. Six forty P M. Uh, Tuesday, December sixth. This is Juan Solis, your chair. We have a roll call, please. Where's our secretary? You can do it for her.
Yes, Chairman, she's out. Um, uh, Commissioner Jackson. Commissioner Bealer.
Commissioner Bealer? Chairman Solis?
Present.
Commissioner McCormick?
Present.
And Commissioner? Boga?
Bengachia.
Bengachia.
Present.
Commissioner Kristen? And Todd Herman is absent.
We have a quorum, so we'll go ahead and continue. At this time, we do have any citizens that may be willing to talk to us. This is an open session. Are there any citizens signed up to speak to us? Seeing no citizens, we'll move on to our consent agenda. I am sure the zoning commission has had the opportunity to read through its agenda from last ye- week, month, November first. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes? If not, then I'll entertain a motion to approve. We have a motion, I'll need a second.
Second.
Have a motion. Motion by Jackson. Second by Skip. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next is new business, four point one public hearing. It is seven, six forty two. I opened the public hearing. It's a public hearing, discussion, and possible action on an application for a special use permit, S U P from Crown Castle Towers, zero, six, two, L L C at two, zero, zero, two, Lock Hill Selma, Castle Hills, Texas, seven, eight, two, one, three. More particularly described as C B five, seven, seven, eight, P ninety-nine, eight, A B S two, six, zero, C H C B two, twenty, as found in the real property records of Bear County, Texas, to formally authorize an existing Monopole telecommunications tower, equipment, and facilities, as per lo- local code requirements. Public hearing is now open. Is everybody assigned for the public hearing? I don't see anybody. Is anybody online? Willing to speak on this issue on the public hearing? Seeing none? Then at six forty-three, I close the public hearing. Now we'll go into discussion. At this point, I believe the, uh, the requesters are coming forward for a presentation.
Good evening, Chair, members of the Commission. Nice to see you again. I'm Bev Francis, one, twelve, East Pecan in San Antonio. I'm the attorney for Crown Castle. With us again tonight is Paul Peckins, National Zoning Manager for Crown Castle. Uh, to a brief recap, we're asking, as the Chair read in the uh, statement on the agenda, that, uh, for the special use permit that will allow this tower to be brought in compliance. And at the last meeting, recall, there was a question, the reason we're back tonight, regarding the existing deed restrictions. And I believe the city attorney has provided you with a copy we just received at five o'clock this evening. He did a copy of the signed release of the restrictions that would relate to commercial use on the property, signed by the Boy Scouts of America. So we're here, uh, to ask that the special use permit be recommended for approval, which will allow the continuing use of this tower for the critical infrastructure, providing, as we discussed at the last meeting, the coverage necessary by multiple carriers. And again, we appreciate all the hard work the city attorney has given to this in marshaling through, getting the release worked out with the uh, Boy Scouts of America and working and being so responsive to this. I've known Mark for decades. It's the honor of being, as old as I am, be able to say decades. But, uh, it's been a real pleasure. So we're respectfully requesting your recommendation for approval of this special use permit.
I have not seen any release or letter or anything else.
I was gonna ask. Yeah.
Mark, may I get one please? You want to?
Mr. Jackson, I had previously given a copy of that to Mr. McCormick and Spendenogia. Um, and they're passing it down. So I think Mr. Solis has it.
Yes, sir, I did.
Beuler, see it when you're through. That exhausts the copies I have available to distribute.
It's not a problem, sir. Do you want to go over the gist of what the we? What we have in front of us? Give us your synopsis.
That the Boy Scouts say that they release in full and forever discharge uh, the substation property, which is the property, the subject of this application, from the restrictions, such that the substation property will no longer be burdened by the restrictions described above. Those restrictions were that all transformer station construction on the property was to be located at least a hundred and eighty-five feet from the property line of any private residence existing on October eighth, nineteen fifty-eight. And second, that no part of the substation property would be used for any other commercial purposes than or used as a transformer station. So those are the two restrictions that are being released by the Boy Scouts. Um, I think it's pretty clear that uh, none of us really remember what that property looked like on October eighth, nineteen fifty-eight. Um, but I don't think there are any residences in the city of Castle Hills anywhere close to a hundred and eighty-five feet from this substation property, because across Lock Hill Selma is the city of San Antonio, and across Northwest Military Highway is the Boy Scout King. Um, and that Northwest Military itself may be over almost two hundred feet in, in width going across. Uh, but this was to clear up and to, um, give the city a level of comfort in approving the requested application. Um, as Mr. Francis said, this really is to s- to confirm that the use, um, has been appropriate and, um, and, and just to get the uh, kind of official in writing and in the permanent city records, um, the approval of the existence of the Monopole. Uh, the resolution in the packet was modified, the last paragraph of that resolution was modified um, at the request of CPS Energy and Crown Cancel to make it clear that it'll be just one Monopole, no additional Monopoles, but that they may be adding other users to the pole and also modifications in, in view of potential technological development. In nineteen fifty-eight, there were no towers like this. There were no antennas like this.
We appreciate the, the synopsis. I think it's important for us, there was some ambiguity in reference to the position by the Boy Scouts. Uh, and this pretty much clarifies that for us. At this time, um, is there anyone else willing to speak? Since it's our discussion? Seeing none, then I'll go to my colleagues. I'll need a motion for approval.
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, for purposes of discussion, I'll move that, uh, the Commission approved resolution, a draft resolution, twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh, six, A. Uh, a revised copy of which has been provided separately from the packets.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner. I'll need a second.
A second.
Got a motion and a second? Let's get into discussion. Anybody willing to speak? Have anything on thoughts? Like I said earlier, I think the ambiguity was addressed, which is what we wanted, and it's been done. Seeing no discussion? Then I will go straight to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Have a good afternoon and happy holidays.
Thank you, and it's great seeing you all again. And again, uh, thanks for the time that you and your team and also Louie has given to this project. So happy holidays to everyone and thank you again.
Okay, sir, good to see you. Bye-bye, thank you. Thank you. I do want to recognize Louie. Thank you, Louie, for working on this along with our city attorney to make sure that we got everything addressed as the zoning commission had requested. All right, let's go to four point two. It is six fifty. I'll open the public hearing and discussion of possible action on a question, James Denny, to modify an existing S U P for properly located at twelve oh seven Jackson Keller Road, Castle Hills, Texas, seventy-two, one, three, more particularly described as C B five, six, eight, two, block, no, lot thirty, City of Castle Hills, Texas, to modify the required amount of parking spaces as stipulated as a previously granted S U P. Is anybody signed here on the public hearing to make a presentation? Or bring anything? Yes, sir, please come forward.
No one signed up? Yeah.
Are you Mr. Denny?
Uh, no, my name is Mark McKinney. I'm one of the partners, uh, and the ownership of the, uh, facility.
Okay. Please proceed.
Okay. Um, as you, as you know, we, uh, we operate a ninety-seven unit. Or did, uh, nineteen ninety-eight. Um, the award was, uh, requirement was sixty-six and a half parking spaces for the ninety-seven units. We, we believe that twenty-something years later, um, senior living industry has changed and there is really not a uh, in, uh, uh, as much of a reason for senior living residents to have automobiles as there may have been in ninety-eight. Um, we, uh, have these ninety-seven units. We've done a study, uh, onsite. Um, and we're proposing that the number of parking spaces be reduced to fifty-five, which is the number of parking spaces in the existing parking lot for what we call the main campus, the three buildings. Um, at this time, um, on an average day, um, space is taken up is twenty-three, which is about thirty-five percent of the sixty-six. Uh, the reason for that is that our Alzheimer's unit, uh, which has seventeen apartments, um, we do not allow any Alzheimer's patients to have automobiles on the property for pretty good reason. The, uh, other, uh, issue is that most of the people, the majority of people that by the time they get to an assisted living facility have gone through several stages and I'm sh- I'm sure that and I, as I have with my father, uh, you probably have with your loved ones or someone in your family, that one of the first things that happens in this progression to an assisted living facility is that the keys to the car are taken away. And the car is either the spouse drives or if there is no spouse, that it's passed on to a relative or whatever. So that's the reason why of the thirty-eight existing uh, senior living residents we have, only three automobiles. So they're just, are, they just don't, don't drive it certain camp they want. But, um, we have done a, a projection and assuming that this whole facility is a hundred percent occupied, that, uh, there would be six residents, um, driving cars to park on the lot. And there would be a total of thirty, um, total spaces taken up at one time or another during the day. Now, residents are not the only people using the parking, though the main, uh, the main users are the staff. And those, uh, uh, we generally have, we have a staff of seventeen and, um, fourteen of those people drive automobiles to the site. Others take the bus. Um, the other, about ten during a, a normal day, there are about ten visitors, either family members or vendors um, that come on and off the property. And, uh, we see an average of three to four spaces at a time being taken by these folks. Now, um, the main campus is the three, the three buildings on, uh, on, on six acres. And you've got to, I, I put an exhibit in there. Um, and our, our purpose, you know, there are five and a half acres of this property that are vacant and have been for some time. There's two, um, vacant buildings on this property. Eventually, we plan, now that's already zoned the same way. It's zoned as B District and C District, as is the, the main campus. Uh, eventually, our plan is to develop that property to be compatible with the main campus. But we don't want to burden that property with the parking requirements for the main campus that aren't even being utilized at this point. So that's kind of the, the strategy and the philosophy behind the request. Um, it, and then here's a question that may come up. So what, when, when you guys give an event, what happens? Well, we've held this property for two years. Uh, we closed, um, December thirty-first of twenty twenty. We've had two events with had overflow parking. One was a Christmas party and the other was an open house. We have, um, an arrangement with the academy across the street that if there are overflow, because generally our events are on a weekend or they're on a holiday and the academy is closed. They've been gracious enough. And oh, by the way, we have a relationship with students that want to do service hours uh, at our facility. So we want to make a partnership between that facility. But that being said, uh, twice in two years, we have used their facility for overflow parking. Um, so if it turns out that we need additional parking, um, this, the academy has agreed to that. So, but for an every, for just for everyday use, as you say, uh, we're requir- requesting fifty-four spaces and we project a hundred percent occupancy that thirty of those spaces would be used. Right now, twenty-three are being used on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you. Last year, personally.
Okay.
Is anybody else signed up for this public hearing? Seeing that at six fifty-seven, we closed the public hearing and now go into running the mission discussion. Um, I probably start, I like to start. So, so please come on. So if I am intended currently, what you're trying to do is reduce one's expectation that was approved in ninety-eight uh, in terms of the space that you have. So when you reduce your thought that is in the future, we have built, we have built some. That will come with expectations of parking at that time. So what's the difference in the net that you're looking at?
Well, if we, as, sure, a- a- and if we, part of this property is, uh, 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 B District duplexes along the top, this, the back part of the property. And the plan that originally, and, and it still is, what we would like to do is to put independent living in there, which would have uh, an automobile parking space per unit, you know, because people are, independent living are generally fifty-five and older. But what we don't want to have happen is that if we build or or if we sell the property, somebody else builds it. I mean, you know, we, that could happen, you know, that's, we're in business. Um, that we don't want to have that building be burdened with the parking requirement of the main campus. And, um, I've been in commercial real estate and I'm a developer and cross-parking, uh, agreements are a nightmare. And I'm sure you guys, the cities can talk about that, but any, any type of cross-parking agreement that you have between different entities is, it just doesn't work out.
So in essence, what you're doing is reducing the requirement, we're asking us to reduce the requirement for the present property so you can free, have free and clear the other acres plus the property without the burden of the parking.
That's correct.
So you're creating two entities or possibilities in the future, because what's going to happen as to you, what you pointed out is the potential for you to sell that other property without the burden of the parking that is already there.
That's correct. And, and right now, it would be the same ownership.
Today.
Today.
Today. Um, and, and I think that's, okay, so I understand what you're trying to get done. Um, you want to me, you want to be, in essence, freeing clear of any other cross-responsibilities that that property may have presently because of the parking that was there. Let me ask our city attorney. Mark, is that a true statement that by doing, is it, I, I, in my estimation, I don't understand why this step is necessary. Why is it necessary? I mean, he articulated because he believes it'll be two separate properties at that point. But if they ever plan to sell it, would that parking requirement be carried over to that other property?
Um, a special use permit runs with the property. Unless, unless the, unless in, on adoption, it says otherwise. So the general rule is a spec- a special use permit is for the use of that property, whether it's by the applicant or their successor. Um, and in, in the past, um, this property has changed hands. I think they may be the third owner and operator. And when the first changeover occurred, um, it was handled administratively that, that as long as the new owner signed a document confirming that they would be bound by and comply with the terms of the special use permit, it didn't come to the, to the zoning commission. When this, uh, gentleman's group then became the owner, the same process was followed. They're coming now, and I think your, your summary, Mr. Chairman, I think was correct. They're coming now to put the property in a position where they can make further development or a future owner could make further development of the part right, that right now is not part of the ninety-seven unit facility. That's basically correct.
Yeah.
I think you summarized it well, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. You know, one of the things that's interesting to me and I learned back in the day when I was a state legislator was intent. So when, when, when they first approved the S V P, the intent was there that they would accept the property and the subsequent owners, which is when you bought the property, it was accepting with the intent that that was the parking requirement. And therefore, when you assumed ownership, you knew the requirement for the parking was at that level and it was going to be a hindrance, right? Because you're a commercial developer, so you could see down the road that in the future it would be, uh, a hindrance, I suppose. But you still went ahead and bought it. Which is your prerogative. As you mentioned, you're a commercial lender and understand it and developer. Um, I think it's interesting. I want to hear my colleagues what they're thinking. Um, and then I'll, I'll tell you where I feel. Does anybody want to speak? Questions?
A question. The way I read this, you're actually cutting down your parking spaces.
Correct.
And you're still leaving fifteen attached to the five and a half acres that's undeveloped.
Right, and that would, that would go with that undeveloped part.
If you, uh, lose those fifteen spaces to a new owner and developer, that puts you below your, your limit.
That's correct. That puts us, um, when, we're not in compliance with the S U P. Correct? I mean, that's correct, because there's sixty-six and a half spaces for that.
Why reduce it?
Hmm?
Why reduce your current situation?
Well, becau- well, two reasons. One is, um, if we develop that piece of property under another uh, entity, it's going to be burdened with the main campus.
The way I understand this, that fifteen spaces is going to be attached to your campus one way or the other. If, if somebody else goes to develop the five and a half acres, are y'all developing? It's still attached to it.
Well, if we split, if we split the fi- five and a half acres off into a separate entity, then that fifteen acre, fifteen spots would go with that. Then we would, we would not be in compliance with the main campus.
And so what's your resolution at that point?
Well, then we wouldn't be able to sell the property. Because we would not be in compliance. So we would not be able to check a past time.
Commissioner Jackson, I just have another clarification. How did you arrive at your number?
Number of what?
Spaces that you're going to require, that you reduced it to. How did you arrive at that without not protecting your original S U P?
Oh, sure. The number of spaces in the, on the main campus and those two main parking lots is fifty five spaces. And they're surrounded by the three buildings. That's where we came up with that uh number. That would go with the main campus because that's a unit. It's really a unit. If we have spaces. We have another parking lot off somewhere else. It's not really conducive to um to traffic flow because many of these folks are on walkers or they're walking and they can't walk from one parking space to
I got you.
You know what I'm saying, so.
Commissioner Big O J. I saw you answer to get this week. Okay.
I still don't understand why you want to cut down on the total number of parking, permitted parking spaces.
I don't bel- okay, I'll be quite frank. I don't believe that when the, and none of us were here when this occurred in nineteen ninety eight, or maybe you were. I wasn't, but I don't believe that um the number of parking spaces at the time was, was um was advantageous for the use. I think it was overkill. Now, my partner, James Denny, who's got thirty years in this business and the corporate side. Excuse me, and managing multiple properties along with Mr. Johnson, who owns fifteen properties around the country. Our L L, he's our managing member. When we bought the property. James Denny said, you know, this is overkill. There's too many parking spat, spots for these, for this number of units. We'll never, he said, I, you know, I've dealt with fifty, sixty properties around the country. We've never had this much parking for this number of units. And so I think that at the time, maybe they were planning on something else. I don't know what the intent was of Brookfield, uh, who built this property or or what the intent was of the zoning board. So what we're trying to do is just get it more, we're not, and we're not taking, we're not planning on building any buildings on those parking lots. I mean, we just want to keep that parking for the main campus. That makes sense?
I'm still not understanding why you want to cut down on your number of permitted, currently permitted parking spaces. And leave the fifteen attached to the five and a half acres. I, I, I don't understand why you want to cut, cut down on it.
Well, the, because the five and a half acres with the fifteen spaces will be whatever we put, we, whatever we put on that property is going to have a parking requirement, obviously. And I'm sorry, and if we split, we, we want to be able to um to take the main campus and just have an allocation of, of the number of spaces that are uh appropriate.
And therein lies the rub. I, I don't really have a problem with parcel one, with this existing with fifty five parking spaces, but if we were to approve this zoning, uh, the, this resolution is written. Hmm, no matter what you do with the five point five acres or, or whatever your successors do with the five point five acres, they would only have to have fifteen parking spaces. If they built a shopping mall, fifteen parking spaces. They built a story apartment complex, fifteen parking spaces. Is that not, am I misreading this?
Well, whatever use is going to be, uh, let's take an example on that property. What we're trying to do is just talk about these parking spaces, but if you're going to go to the future. Say someone builds another fifty units. I mean, it's zoned for two-story multifamily. So they build another fifty units of assisted living. That's going to have a parking requirement. And the fifteen units, the fifteen spaces would count towards that requirement. Right?
Not with this special use permit, says they can only have fifteen, they only have to have fifteen parking spaces, no matter what they do in the future.
Okay, it's their language that can be written into, into the amendment that would say a minimum that this fifteen would go towards whatever requirement um the, the new use has. That would be in it.
Let me, let me ask our city attorney, Mark. Um, we have three attorneys on the zoning commission. What would be your interpretation of the commissioner's thoughts on whether it's going to require only fifteen as a minimum? With anything that is being built?
I think a clarification would be appropriate.
Okay.
Um, it was certainly not the intent of this resolution to allow fifteen parking spaces on that property forever or for any use. It's tied really to it being used in conjunction with the ninety seven unit property. But I think Mr. Bueller makes a good point, and I do think we can tighten up this language to make it clear that um parcel two is also ultimately going to need fifty five parking spaces. There may only be fifteen now, but if they ever do any kind of, seek any kind of building or other permit.
That's what
Then the parking would be increased to fifty five spaces on, on parcel two. Um, and um, if that's a problem for the developer for any number of reasons, they could seek a variance from the Board of Adjustment.
Does the applicant understand what our attorney just outlined for you?
Yes.
And what are your thoughts on that?
My thoughts are whatever use, whatever use, I'm, I'm assuming it's going to be multifamily because that's what is zone. So if we build, let's say fifty units on there, that's going to be a certain number of parking spaces per unit, and that fifteen would count towards that number.
So it's fifteen plus whatever is required depending on what they're building.
Fifteen is a credit now would be applied, and it, and I will tell you, those fifteen spaces may be torn up, maybe demoed to make room for a building. Uh, we don't know because we're not, we don't have anything planned on that.
Commissioner, would you like to make an amendment to that for the clarification of which you seek?
I still don't understand. You have currently, uh, how many spaces for your parcel one?
Fifty five. On parcel one, fifty five is fifty one plus four handicap. It's fifty five. And we're currently using twenty three. And we estimate thirty to a hundred percent occupancy. That's what we're talking about.
I don't understand what this, what this uh, uh, resolution is attempting to do. Just that simple.
Mark, we may need some clarification on your behalf instead of the applicant. Will be added over.
At the time, if, as and when, a request for a special use permit. For a different use, any special use permit is not for parcel two.
That would be in an essence a credit towards whatever they dealt with.
And that's, and that's fine because whatever units is going to have its own parking point.
I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
You have fifty five permitted spaces. You talk about up in the top four for uh handicap. Out of the fifty five, how many are going to be for handicap?
Well, there, it's, it stays the way it is right now, which originally was written for handicap in fifty one regular spaces.
Would parcel two be compliant uh as it sits with the fifteen parking spaces?
I'm sorry, with the what?
Would parcel two be compliant with our present zoning requirements as it sits today? With fifteen spaces?
I believe it would because we do not have a
There's nothing there.
There's a vacant building that's not occupied.
Please remember, yeah, if I could, just remember if and when somebody decides to purchase that, the process starts all over in reference to coming here.
With those two vacant buildings, assuming that they are occupied, are they, are they in compliance with fifteen parking spaces?
It depends on the use. If it's If it's an office building, no, or if it's retail, no.
I'm trying to figure out whether we need to address parcel two at all.
We do not at this point because there's no application before us, so we
No, it, it's a com- it's a The resolution before us is, is regarding parcel one and parcel two, no?
Yes, and maybe I was mistaken when I put that together. But I was trying to show the differentiation between the two parcels that we are proposing eventually.
It may seem that you only need a special use permit regarding parcel one.
That's correct. That's correct.
Because our problem is that if we make any kind of decision regarding parcel two, we're specifying a number of parking spaces or some future unknown use which would run with the land. And that's not really what we want to do. We're, we're opening ourselves up to a bigger problem down the way if we don't do what Mr. Bueller has suggested and maybe, maybe just address.
Parcel two is compliant presently.
It is.
Then there's no point, we, I, I don't think we need to address parcel two at all, do we?
Can we credit, I mean, weren't we going to credit person two with the fifteen?
We don't need to, if it's present use.
Correct, it's zero.
Now, the, the problem, the reason I think you do need to say something about parcel two is because right now parcel two is covered by the special use permit. Okay, so, so in theory, the comment, Mr. Bueller, you made originally is accurate. That unless we address parcel two directly in this recommendation, the city council also addresses it in its ultimate action, if any, on this item. This applicant or a future owner of the facility could conceivably use the S U P to say, wait a minute, I'm going to put a second, I'm going to put a second set of buildings for a ninety seven unit assisted living facility, and I've got, I can do it with fifteen parking spaces. That was not my intent in drafting this. The proposed second sentence that I've come up with for y'all's consideration is parking requirements for parcel two shall be determined based on the future use of parcel two.
Exactly, and that's what it has to be done.
Yeah, I think it needs to be addressed, otherwise it's just, it's like it's doesn't even
For purposes of I'll make a motion that we improve res- resolution number twenty dash twelve dash twenty dash, twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh six dash B. With the, with the revision as described by Mr. Schnall and his comment.
Perfect. I'll need a second. Oh, second now. Thank you, sir. So we have a motion and a second on the amended motion which addresses directly the parcel number two. Um, and, and basically setting it up that when in the future some decision is made on it and the property is perhaps sold or looking at, it will go through the proper process, which is what starts with us and other, and other entities in the city council. So, understanding that, we have a motion and a second. See another discussion, discussion. Discussion, see no discussion. All those in favor, please, if I'm a say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. Yes, sir. A little bit of fun discussion, but appreciate you.
Well, that's kind of how we get things done, isn't it?
Agreed.
You're in Texas, right?
Thank you, sir. Have a good evening. Merry Christmas. All right, four point three public hearing discussion and possible action on a request from Audria Perkins for an S U P at two two one one Northwest Military Highway Suite one thirty. Castle Hills, Texas, seven eight two one three. More particularly described, a city block five seven seven eight, block lot two twenty-two, C H C B two one nine, City of Castle Hills, Texas. For an S U P to allow for the operation of a brewery with bottle shop and taproom. Public hearing is open at seven eighteen P M. Is there anybody signed up at the public hearing component of it? Once, going twice. Seeing no one here for the public hearing. Public hearing is closed at seven nineteen. At this point, we'll have a discussion. Uh, can I have a motion to put this up so that we can have the discussion?
Okay, for purposes of discussion, I'll move that we approve resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twelve dash oh six C.
Thank you, sir. Have a motion and a second, please. Just for discussion.
A second.
Thank you. Have a second. This time, uh, we'd like to hear the applicant, application. And welcome to Castle Hills. Well, is that official yet, but you know, I
Good evening. Thank you for uh hearing our proposal for the special use permits. At twenty two eleven Northwest Military Highway Suite one thirty, which is a commercial strip center at the corner of Northwest Military.
Sorry, if you wouldn't mind, move a little closer, move the microphone a little closer.
All right. Is that better?
Better.
That better, okay. All right, stop me again. Uh, Commercial Strip Center at the corner of Northwest Military Highway and West Avenue. This property is currently zoned as G for General Business District. The total property is eighteen thousand two hundred and seventy square feet on six point seven one acres and suite one thirty is two thousand one hundred and fifty-eight square feet. I'm Audra Perkins and this is Frederick Yoretta. And at this location, we are proposing to open a seven barrel or two hundred and seventeen gallon nano brewery. Producing craft beer with a taproom and small bottle shop named Thirsty Pups Brewery and Bottle Shop. Uh, craft breweries are defined by the Brewers Association as small and independent with an annual production of six million barrels of beer or less. We expect to produce three hundred barrels or nine thousand three hundred gallons uh a year, making us a nano brewery. Um, Frederick is a graduate from the American Brewers Guild Brewing School and has been brewing professionally for two plus years and homebrewing for seven years. Uh, I'm a designer by trade and both of us are beer enthusiasts who are certified Cicerons, which is basically the sommelier of the beer industry. Um, all of that is to say that we take pride in our beer and are looking to create a high quality product atmosphere at our brewery taproom. Uh, we are planning to sell only within our taproom with the possibility of small distribution to local bars and restaurants. We do not plan to expand, become a large production brewery with extensive distribution. The taproom will be small and comfortable space with seating for on thirty to forty people, and our proposed operating hours will be Thursday through Monday, two to nine P M on weekdays and twelve to ten P M on weekends. Um, we also plan to have a small bottle shop where we can curate some of our favorite beers from around the world as well as local breweries to encourage a beer-loving community for our customers. Um, one of our key goals is to give back to the community of Castle Hills, whether it be charity functions or providing a comfortable location for groups to meet. We want to be open and available for whatever is needed from the community. Um, to understand a little bit more about the brewery industry, we wanted to provide a quick statistical overview. Uh, nationally, the beer market is a one hundred point twenty-two billion dollar industry with craft beer taking twenty-six point eight billion dollars of the share. In twenty twenty-one, the US beer sale volume for the overall beer market grew one percent with craft beer accounting for seven point nine percent of that growth. Uh, according to the Texas Craft Brewers Guild, Texas has two breweries per capita for one thousand, um, age twenty-one plus adults. Hundred thousand, sorry, which only ranks at forty-seventh in the nation. The craft beer industry has a four thousand nine hundred and six million dollar impact on the Texas economy and supports thirty-one thousand one hundred and seventy-seven full-time jobs. Um, all this is based on the twenty twenty-one Brewers Association data. Um, per capita, San Antonio is the second largest city in Texas behind Houston. However, the craft brewery count in San Antonio area is twenty-seven with nineteen in Bear County. While the Houston area has fifty-one, Austin has seventy-seven, and Dallas, Workworth has fifty-three, showing that per capita Tex, in Texas, San Antonio has plenty of room for growth. Um, statistically, craft beer drinkers are between the ages of thirty-five and forty-four. However, in twenty twenty-two, the largest increase in craft beer consumption uh is taking place with millennials aged twenty-one to thirty, showing that breweries are appealing to a large area demographic. And in the twenty twenty census, the median age of Castle Hills is forty-three point three, um, which is younger than fifty-four age in the twenty-ten census. Um, all of these statistics are, did I get all that right? To say that we believe that there's a, an, a welcome market for us and that we'd be a productive contribution to the City of Castle Hills. Uh, we appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sure, uh, right now we're planning Thursday through Monday. Um, two to nine on weekdays and twelve to ten on weekends. Which would be Friday and Saturday.
Oh, basically, uh, we, different breweries have their own like selective, uh, like special beers that they sell. And some are distributed, some aren't, so we'll, we'll have to go to certain breweries to get them. So basically, it's just like a curated, like with wine, it's curated by us and people who want to get it that can't go all the way to Austin or Houston to get it, they can come to our bottle shop and get it.
So in essence, you will have cases or some
Yeah.
Other people's beer that you'll be
Exactly.
Now, do you serve there or do they just come and take?
Uh, for the bottle shop, it's a to-go. And then, but we will have a taproom and we will uh highlight other people's beer on our tap as well.
So I hope you enjoyed our questions about parking. Tell me about your parking.
Well, the, the parking is
I'm, you know, I'm not sure about the number of parkings, but it's a big, uh, huge
Where are you on the picture? I can't tell where this shop is going to be at.
I have, I have one that has the
It's right next to the, uh,
Castle Hills didn't expand for the color copies. We got black and white.
It's right next to the Afghan restaurant, right next door.
Okay.
Yeah.
The first one right after those.
Is that where Billy was?
Yeah, it was, it's right, it's close, right next to it. But I believe they moved. We will serve uh prepackaged food, but we won't be having a, we won't have a kitchen to serve.
Which is one of the reasons why we wanted to be in the same area with other restaurants.
Yeah.
Or with restaurants.
Are the end of the question? I do have one other question. That's in reference. You know, what's interesting to me is we evolve as a community. One of the things we definitely want to do and understand is the safety of our community. You know, the introduction of more opportunities for people to come, enjoy themselves and, and drink a few and then have to drive our streets as they leave us.
Yes.
Or they're coming to us. Um, that's a concern for me, right? I want to make sure that we are as safe as we can be uh for what we're trying to get done. At the same time, I understand the economic opportunities are there for our community also, right?
Yes.
Um, I'd like it that you offer something, it's kind of unique in the fact that it's not a a, a, a mega store that would attract a lot of people. But rather, I, I like the concept that it could be a neighborhood place to hang out, right? So people would be from amongst ourselves as well as attracting some that are coming through. What are your thoughts about why? And how you're, you envision? Who comes to your shop?
Well, with the craft beer community, it's a pretty niche comm- community. Uh, it's a little bit different from your regular bar hopping community. It's more people who, who understand the process of beer and, and really take that, uh, they're like beer nerds, so they want to come in and drink and, and see the different types and how it's processed and the different kinds of beers that you can make. Uh, as opposed to going there and just, just drinking. So with what I've experienced in the craft beer community, they're more about the actual product and not about just going there just to drink a lot. And then another thing that we're going to be, we're not going to be open late. We don't like, we don't like to be open late. We're, we, we go to bed at eight, so.
So, I, I mean, I, as one that has a limited palate, I would love the, are you going to teach people what it, the different ways?
Yes. Yes, I would love to, to actually, uh. Have little classes. Uh, the brewery I work at right now, it's called Second Pitch Beer Company. They're up, uh, up by the airport. And we are very, um. We, we, we emphasize education on, on the process of beer and the making of beer. And just not just making it, but tasting it and palate, uh. As she said, we're Cicerones, which, uh, we, we know like the different. Uh, ways to taste things and how they're supposed to taste. And we'd love to do like educational classes. Uh, on, on tasting beer, making beer and just beer in general, everything beer, basically.
I don't know, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I'm just like a Coors Light guy, so hey.
I am too. Coors banquet, I like.
If there's more to me to learn. Uh, I'll be willing to take some classes.
But that is, the Coors is probably the, one of the better beers made because. Their Q C is really good.
I apologize. Any questions for the commission?
I.
Yes, sir.
At first, I, I was picturing something my wife and I did a long time with. They have this home brewing place and we went and we participated in the home brewing classes. Where, where we went through the process with the word and the, something like that. I.
Yeah.
I, very little. But this sounds like it's a liquor store and a bar.
No, so our, 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 our bottle shop is very small. It's going to be probably at the most like. Ten, fifteen, maybe twenty bottles and then our to-go beers from our beer, our brewery. Uh, so it's, it's not anything that's going to be a huge, uh, liquor shop, uh, like a liquor store. But we will have like stuff that you can't get anywhere else. So it's going to be kind of nice. Um, we do want to do like home brewing classes.
How is this not a bar?
It is a, it is a bar. It's a, it's a. Taproom beer bar.
It's just not a hard liquor bar.
It's not hard, yeah.
There's no liquor.
And that's the need for the S U P because the food, it's the higher on the alcohol side. Because of this not serving food essentially.
Right. So it's a bar.
Technically as an S U P, yes.
Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? I noticed we have some, some guests in the audience. If you want to comment on this issue. More than welcome to please come forward. Residents are always welcome to the zoning commission. So you heard the presentation, you heard our questions. Tell us your name, where you live. The proximity to this place.
Uh, my name is Richard Keith. I live at one one five Daniel Drive.
Excellent.
Here in Castle Hills. I wasn't actually here for this particular item. Uh, but hearing, hearing more about the item that, as they've described it, I, I think it sounds great. Uh, I'm a fifty three year old. Husband and, and dad, you know, family oriented person. And, uh, having said that, I think. That a, a. A micro brewery and taproom is something that's really compatible with, I think. Um. The lifestyle of creative people and, uh, in civically engaged people. Um, I think it actually helps this particular. Uh. Uh, so, uh, shopping center as well. I, I have got, been going to that shopping center for many years and. I think the shopping center could use a little bit of energy. It has, um, it, it's, right now it feels like a sea of parking. Um, without anchor tenants that are really contributing significantly to the economic development. Um, of Castle Hills. I think this could be. A good thing. Unto itself, but I also think it could be an anchor for other interesting businesses.
Excellent.
And I don't think it's going to lead to other. To like a proliferation of bar requests in the, in the. In that particular shopping center or, or in the immediate area either. So anyway, that's.
I appreciate, I, you know, and, and. I also understand the explanation that it's, it's a niche, right? It truly is. It's not just the Hooters or something else like that where. Pretty much anybody goes. So people have a purpose, people have an understanding. Uh, which gives me a level of comfort that I didn't have before.
And again, I just want to stress, I wasn't even here for this particular item. I'm not a plant. In the audience. But I, I would support it personally.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Okay, so we've had our discussion. Uh, we've had our questions. And we have a motion. Uh, before us without any other discussion, discussion, discussion. All those in favor, please signify the same eye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations. We'll be looking forward to it.
Yay.
I'll be ready for my lessons. Um, ladies and gentlemen, we believe we have gone through our agenda. Thank you all for your professionalism and being here. I appreciate it. I wish you both all happy holidays. We will not meet till January. So Ryan, thank you. Mark, thank you. Louis, thank you. Uh, appreciate all of the work that you guys do to get this to this level. At this time, I'll inter- interchange a motion to adjourn. I have a motion, I have a second. Second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting adjourned seven thirty.